Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for February 18, 2020. If you could all join me in the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kim, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour? Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. All right, moving on in the agenda to the approval. Are there any changes from staff or council regarding the agenda? All right, seeing none, a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Had to do a little bit of math there with our... We do have excused absences for both Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Larmour. All right, public communications. We'll start out with public recognition this evening. Council President Troutner, do you have public recognition?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we may have at least one or two civic students, or do we have a scout in the audience? Would you like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself and let us know why you're here?
I'm here for one of my requirements for Boy Scouts. So, for becoming an Eagle Scout, I have to do a merit badge. This merit badge I'm doing is communications. I am supposed to go to a city council meeting, approved by my counselor, but he never got back to me, so I...
Way to show leadership. Took on the task. Thank you. All right, any additional... Any additional public recognition? All right, seeing none, how about community events? Council President Troutner?
Madam Mayor, just want to go over a few things that we have coming up at the Show Our Center. We do have a Thunderbirds game tonight. They play Moose Jaw Warriors at 7:05. Actually, it's just getting started. The WHL and NHL are hosting their inaugural U.S. Challenge Cup at the SSO Show Our Center February 20th to the 23rd, and this tournament is free to the public. The Seattle Thunderbirds will play the Portland Winterhawks, which is always an exciting game, on Saturday, February 22nd, and they will play Prince George Cougars Sunday, February 23rd. The Tacoma Stars, which is one of our indoor soccer teams, plays the Florida Tropics on Friday, February 27th. Toby Mack, who is a Christian artist, will perform on February 28th. That performance is sold out. And Camila, a Mexican pop-rock band, will perform March 20th. So, lots of great things coming up.
All right. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind people that we have the Spotlight Series that's in progress, and we have Carleen Carter on the 28th of February. Then in March, we have the last two performances, so time is running out. We Shall Overcome a Tribute to Martin Luther King Jr. and Catapult Dancing Shadows. So you might have caught that one on America's Got Talent. They've been on there. But the other thing I want to remind you of is that the community gardens, the registration periods for those are open, so if you're interested, give our Parks Department a call.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on under public communications to the public safety report. Joining us will be Chief Padilla.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to bring you the report for this month. This is going to be about recognition, recognition, and more recognition. So bear with us. I want to start with a couple of square ends. We were able to graduate two more officers from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, and I'd like to call up Officer Derek Lind and Officer Matthew Crawford, please. All right, so on our left there, we have Officer Lind, or furthest away from me, and next to him there is Officer Crawford. I'll read Derek Lind's bio. Derek was born in Washington State, went to high school here, grew up his entire life here, pretty much. Before Kent PD, he was a corrections officer with our city jail for three years, and prior to that, he was with the Fife City Jail for three years as well. He also served as a police reserve officer for seven years in Fife. The first time I met Officer Lind, I was actually there to help as part of an assessment team to do an evaluation of the Fife jail. I thought I was going there to tell him about all the great things that were going on in Fife, and turns out, they ended up shutting the jail after that, so shutting down the jail. But we were able to secure Officer Lind from them, and he's been a great addition to his team. When we asked him, "Why Kent?", he said, "Kent was kind enough to hire me from Fife when they closed their jail", and he says his career goal has always been to be a police officer. So when he applied with Kent, that was one of his goals, and so last year, he applied, and we were happy to have him transition from our corrections facility to our patrol. He likes to, he enjoys hiking, camping, and taking vacations with his family. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Derek Lind. Next up is Matthew Crawford. He is from Pierce County. He went to school at Rogers High School and Pierce College in Lakewood. Before Kent PD, he was also a corrections officer. So if you didn't know, we have an outstanding Corrections to Police Officer program. It's been a great avenue for us to get officers through the ranks, if you will, and he worked at our Kent facility for 11 years. So I do anniversary cards recognizing our employees when they hit their anniversary, and it was interesting because it was his first year as a police officer, still coming up, but he had 11 years on, so it was an interesting anniversary date. Something interesting about him, he likes spending as much time as he can with his family, camping, and he's a Seahawks fan, and Mariners fan, so Sundays and the Mariners games. When we asked him why he wanted to work at Kent, he says, "I've worked for the city of Kent for 11 years now, and I love it. It truly is one of the best departments in the state, and I enjoyed my service to the city." Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Matthew Crawford. And Mayor, if you could do the honors?
All right, gentlemen, if you will raise your hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Derek Lind.
You solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America?
To the United States of America.
The state of Washington?
The state of Washington.
And the city of Kent.
The city of Kent.
That I will uphold the principles?
That I will uphold the principles.
And the laws of the United States?
The laws of the United States.
And the state of Washington?
The state of Washington.
And that I will obey the rules and regulations of the Kent Police.
I'll take your name.
All right, it's official.
Just leave it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next up, we want to present a couple of lifesaving awards. If I could have Officer Adam Ferguson and Detective Matt Kilner come forward, please. So as they make their way forward, I'll tell you about what they did. So on July 29, 2019, Officer Adam Ferguson and Matt Kilner were dispatched to a call of CPR in progress. So someone was having serious emergency medical problems. There was a male that was not breathing and was non-responsive. Officer Kilner arrived and immediately started doing chest compressions, and Officer Ferguson took over later while we were waiting for a Pugis Sound Fire Authority to arrive. And they were able to keep him responsive and alive long enough for Pugis Sound Fire Authority to take over and continue lifesaving efforts, and eventually, we got this male to the hospital, and he survived his medical episode. So Officer Ferguson and Officer Kilner are being commended for their extraordinary actions, which were instrumental in saving this man's life. We'd like to present them the lifesaving medals and plaques. Next up, I'd like to bestow the Chief's Award of Exceptional Duty, and I'd like to call up Officer Matthew Roush and Officer Doug Westcott. Actually, I'd like to call up Officer Westcott's daughter, Peyton. Officer Westcott is out of state and couldn't be here tonight, but his daughter is here on his behalf. And now she's regretting that she volunteered for him. So, similar to the lifesaving award, the Exceptional Duty Award is given to employees who perform in an outstanding capacity, but they go above and beyond under unusual or dangerous circumstances, which was the case for this particular award. Generally involves the performance of duties in which employee is exposed to exceptional danger. So on December 13, 2019, Officers Matthew Roush and Doug Westcott responded to a significant structure fire at the Woodlands Estates. We might all remember that. It wasn't that long ago. Officers Roush and Westcott arrived and began checking, or they arrived and they found a fully engulfed entire unit of the apartment complex that was quickly spreading to other apartments. They started to go to work, realizing there were people inside that may not be aware. Officer Roush entered the building and began clearing occupants from the apartments. Officer Westcott did likewise, also entering the building and began checking on doors to ensure residents were clear and safe. Both officers are being commended today for their quick actions. Despite obvious dangers to themselves, they successfully alerted and removed numerous people from the imminent danger of fire and smoke, and relaying pertinent information to the responding fire units that day. I truly believe, you know, fire is exceptionally good, and I'll have Chief Morris and Captain Root come forward. They have an award as well. But fire is an exceptional, dangerous thing. We're not equipped to do that. So for these gentlemen to go in and put their lives in harm's way to get people out and save them was commendable, and it's our honor to present them the Chief's Award.
So I just want to add, like Chief Padilla said, it was a unique event. It was a significant fire. The first arriving crews saw flames from the fourth floor and units, and it was Officers Westcott and Roush that affected the evacuation of that fire floor prior to fire units arriving. They recognized the potential for the smoke-filled hallway. They made access. They completed evacuation. They reported back to the incident commander, and their report was complete and succinct, really helpful for the incident commander as he played out the rest of the call. One of the commanders also suggested I mention that the police parked appropriately, leaving access for fire, so thank you for that. And all large fires take some teamwork, and a lot of the times, it's the teamwork amongst the fire service agencies that show up. But the police department here, the Kent Police Department, was a key player throughout the day and into the evening of this incident, and specifically Officers Westcott and Roush clearly understood the potential for trapped victims, and their actions had a positive impact. And I'm sure, as Chief Peggus said right after the incident, "We're grateful for their prompt actions. They surely saved lives by their efforts." So thank you for that. Thank you.
All right, one more award, another good one. I'd like to call up Sergeant Daniel Buttonchon, please, and he is receiving the Award for Distinguished Service. So this award is, it goes to employees who exemplify a high-level performance over an extended period of time, years, months. Either that, or they accomplish a major project, develop and implement a new program of services, something on a very high level. You just don't get this every day. Other recipients have been involved with cases such as major homicides or very difficult complex whodunit cases, and that took months to bring to completion. So it is a high bar to receive this award. And so why is Dan getting it today? I'll read what I have here, and then I'll talk about him a little bit. If you can't tell, he's extremely uncomfortable with public recognition. So in an effort to address the regional explosion in homelessness in South King County, the primary role of the Kent Police Special Operations Unit changed from a traditional community-based patrol to homeless outreach. You've heard me speak multiple times. I really don't have a bike, a traditional bike unit. I have converted that almost full-time to a homeless outreach group, and that was spearheaded by Dan for many years. This new role came with considerable challenges and many unprecedented applications of police resources. Adapting to this new role required innovative, solution-oriented leadership. Sergeant Daniel Buttonchon stepped into the role and created a homeless outreach program that is now a model for other law enforcement agencies to replicate. Some of you may remember, they were called down to Olympia to testify about the work we were doing here in Kent and being used for legislation going forward. Sergeant Buttonchon is being commended for advancing the department's effectiveness in meeting the needs of its community in unconventional ways. He exemplifies the mission and values of the Kent Police Department, and he is an outstanding example of the type of leader who puts people first. It is an honor to present the Chief's Award for Distinguished Service to Sergeant Dan Buttonchon.
Chief, before you start back up, I'm going to interrupt really quick.
Please do.
Sergeant Buttonchon, and I see a lot of your team here. The work that you have done in the city of Kent over the last couple of years when it comes to working with our homeless population is second to none. I have had the absolute honor of going all around the region and talking about the work that you guys are doing and holding you up as an example, and the number of other cities that have asked me questions wish they could implement a similar program. And I know there's a lot of work that you all do every day that is not necessarily why you signed up to be a police officer, but you signed up to take care of your community, and that's how you've been doing that. I am so grateful, and Dan, thank you for your leadership of this team over the last while. It's been incredible, and we are all extremely grateful.
I was just going to say, you're a rock star. So everywhere I go, it's, "I love Officer Buttonchon, or Sergeant Buttonchon." And I'm like, "Yeah, I love him too. Pretty good guy." All right. So, last item, and then I'll take any questions, Mayor, you may have. I want to bring up our work that we've been doing up on the West Hill. Last meeting, we talked about some of our response to the problem house up at 259 Court. That's a picture of it there, and for those of you that have been tracking the story, that's a very cleaned-up version of what that house sometimes looked like. So we met with the community. We took their input. We started working right away. We had been working on this problem, property. It'd been a problem for several years, and we've put a ton of resources into it, and we think we finally got to a point now where we're going to be able to remove this problem, hopefully permanently. So after the meetings, we went to work. Our special investigations unit, neighborhood response team, and others went to work. If you remember, we've had history of drugs, property crimes, and gun violence at that specific residence. We made this a priority department-wide. We stepped up uniform patrols. We relooked at things like what we could do in terms of code enforcement, and we re-engaged in whatever type of investigations we could put together, including drug narcotics investigations. And I'm glad to report back that after several days, a couple, three weeks of hard work by our officers and detectives and code enforcement, we were able to make a dent in this place once again. Now, this particular house, in years past, we have hit with the SWAT team before. We raided it before, so it's not like we haven't been trying. But last week, we were able to search a warrant, do a raid, if you will, and serve a warrant there for felony theft. What we determined, or what our detectives determined through investigation, was there were two stolen eco ATM machines located at that residence. If you don't know what those are, those are those tios where you turn your cellphone for recycling, and it gives you money. Those machines are about $25,000 apiece. They generally carry hundreds of dollars in them, and they're about 900 pounds. They're not easy to steal. Well, people associated with this house did steal them. Our detectives did a great job, developed that case, and served the warrant last week. While serving the warrant, subject in a vehicle attempted to flee. That vehicle was displaced by one of our detectives. In the displacement of that vehicle, it did hit a tree, a fence, and a carport. So that was unfortunate, but that particular person that was fleeing had multiple felony warrants and a long career history of violence. I'll just say it, he is a known pimp to us, very much engaged in human trafficking. This guy was just a bad dude. So we were able to take him off. There were some other arrests made, and there are pending charges that will be filed with the King County Prosecutor's Office. So we think we made a huge dent in that. Once our people got inside, they saw something we kind of knew but weren't able to confirm. If you look at the conditions inside, that's, okay, you say, "Oh, yeah, that's bad. That's really bad, and that's really bad." Pretty deplorable conditions inside, infested rats, human waste, you name it, really, really bad, uninhabitable. So now we are looking at this from a code enforcement lens, and we are working towards what I hope will be a red tagging of the building, because we don't think it's safe health-wise for anybody to be in there. So once that is established, if we can establish that, we'll be able to board it up and keep it from people from going in, and then we'll work with the property owner on what to do with the property from there. It would be an outstanding thing if in a few years from now, somebody can reinvest in that. That's no longer a blight on the community. But for now, we think we've put a stop to it, and we'll keep working on it. So that's an update on that, and that completes my report, Mayor.
Any questions for the chief? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on in the agenda to item number five, reports from council and staff. All of your council members up here not only serve on this... All of your council members up here not only serve on the council for the meetings that are held here, but they also serve on regional committees, making sure that Kent's voice and perspective is being heard at the regional level, making sure we are at that table. I will start with my report. I also serve on multiple regional committees, mostly transportation-related. So I had a Transportation Policy Board meeting last week where we're working on the long-range transportation plan going into the future at the Puget Sound Regional Council and trying to determine what our main factors are that we'll be looking at as we develop that plan. Also attended the South County Area Transportation Board meeting today where there was a presentation of the grant projects that are being submitted to the regional grant process. Kent has two projects. One is the raising of 76th Street between 212th and 228th. And the other one is the last phase of the connection that runs east-west, that runs from military on the west side all the way up to Benson on the east side. So we've opened that bridge that's there at 228th, and it would be the completion of that project going forward. So we are hopeful that we've got some good grant requests and that we will be successful in that regional process. We also held a community meeting about the roundabout going in at Fourth and Willis. Very well-attended, and I am optimistic that we were able to answer most of the questions that the neighborhood had on that project going forward. As we move into construction over the summer, there will be several full closures of that intersection on the weekends, and we wanted to make sure that that neighborhood was informed about those closures. Got an opportunity to visit one of our local manufacturers, Salumi. They make cured meats and salami. They moved their production facility for those meats to the Kent Valley not too long ago. So we had a wonderful tour of their facility. We're excited that they are calling Kent home and having a very positive experience here in our industrial valley. Finally, we had some great things happen at Showware Center over the weekend. Comedian Joe Coy, he is actually a local guy from Tacoma, sold out two performances at the Showware Center on Sunday and on Monday. Record crowd on Sunday night, 7,750 people in the building. So it's the first time we had a show in the round so that all of the seats all the way around the arena could be full. It was a fabulous show. When I met him on Sunday night, he asked if it was possible to get a key to the city. So we actually made a proclamation for him, went back on Monday because he has set a record for the highest attendance at Showware Center. So it was a great event, over 14,000 people over those two days at Showware Center. So that's exactly what we like to see happening. With that, I am going to turn to my right to Derek Matheson for our CEO report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to congratulate and thank all of the city staff who have been involved in our Kent 101 program so far. We've now had two sessions of this Citizens Academy that over 30 of our residents are participating in. We've gone through our first-week administration, including the City Clerk's Office. The second week, we had our criminal justice, so Police Department, Law Department, and Municipal Court. And this week, the focus will be on our internally-oriented departments, so finance, human resources, and information technology. Information has been very well-received by our residents, and so happy to see that program. The rest of my report is in the packet, and we have no executive session this evening.
All right. Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a couple presentations during workshop today. The first one was the Kent Industrial Area Tax Performance Briefing. And basically, the city relies on four major tax sources: property tax, sales tax, BNO tax, and utility tax. These fund a majority of public safety projects, parks, and general government services. And this briefing and the data that was collected is helping our economic and community development team as they work on our Valley, the Valley sub-area plan. That was another piece that we heard about. We have been hearing about this very often at council, and we're going to continue to hear about this plan. The key focus is land use and economic development that meets growth targets. And there are actually many chapters to this plan, seven to be in fact. And like I mentioned, we'll continue to hear about how this plan develops, how it meets the needs of our community, how it meets the needs of people looking for jobs in the valley, warehouse manufacturing, and what we want our valley to look like. I also sit on the Regional Transit Committee. We have a meeting in Seattle tomorrow. I sit on the Regional Law Safety and Justice Committee, and we will meet next Thursday. And then the chief didn't mention, but tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Thursday evening, they have something new. It's called Vino with the 5-0, and that'll be at Reds from 5:00 to 7:00. It's very similar to our Coffee with the Chief. You have an opportunity to come and meet with some of our officers, meet with the chief, and ask questions. And then the regional, Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority will meet tomorrow. It's a special meeting at 3:00 PM. And I sit on that board with Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Boyce. So I am going to start down at the left with Councilmember Michaud, and we'll hear what everyone has been up to.
I serve on the Regional Water Quality Board, and my first meeting will be in March.
Thank you. I sit on Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force. We actually had our meeting last Tuesday, right here in our chambers. There were about 50 people across the region in this room. It was amazing to see people finally using the chambers for regional meetings. We had update from King County Prosecuting Attorney, Prosecutor Dan Satterberg on equity and social justice lens they're using to help the victims of violence. And we also had a presentation on Survivors First. It's basically a program, sorry, let me just pull up my mouse here. The program where victims of domestic violence, usually black women, they are charged with, basically, they are the ones who are the victims, but they are the ones who end up getting arrested. So the Survivors First program reviews the cases from the police. They don't charge these victims, look at the history, overall picture, instead of just looking at the snapshot of that incident. Research the history of the individuals involved. And then they basically let the YWCA navigator review the program and get in touch with these victims, they call them survivor defendants, and help them get help, basically. So they're not getting charged. So they're starting this program in Seattle, but it's available countywide. And I am hopeful that we'll be able to use this program, and I think I'll be probably learning more about it and then reaching back to, I guess, giving that information back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sit on the Sound City Association Public Issue Committee, which consists of 38 cities, and we get together to really try to talk about regional issues and so on. We had our first meeting of the year since the new election, assuming I rose vice chair. So we had a great meeting, lots of new members. So we spent the most part of the meeting just kind of getting the new members and went through introduction and so on. Also, we spent some time talking about House Bill 2907, right? Which will allow King County to impose a payroll tax where every employee making 150,000 or more to fund affordable housing. I won't tell you how I feel about that, but maybe the mayor, you've been deeply involved. Can you share a little bit about what you've been doing around that?
Sure. There is a lot of concern with this bill that it will impact all 39 cities in King County, but the conversation only actually occurred with King County government and City of Seattle. So there are some implications that we're concerned about. We've not had the ability to do any sort of analysis on what the impacts would be to Kent businesses. There is concern around the fact that there's not an actual plan to spend this money. I know that in talking to, we had the South County mayors, we're here in Kent today, there is a lot of concern on the part of all of us. So we're working very closely with legislators as this moves forward to make sure that while Seattle's trying to solve a problem and homelessness is regional, that we're not adversely impacting communities like Kent and the South County where we're looking to attract jobs that pay in that range. So just some general concerns about it.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you've been deeply involved and had lots of meeting with that. So the other thing we talked about was the Regional Transit Policy and Plan Update. So that's going to be in 2014. Seattle, first they tried a, but Seattle went out on their own to introduce a transit plan because it failed regionally, so decided to do it on their own, right? So that plan is up in 2020. So they're looking to bring that back to the voters. So I know it's going to go to RTC, I think tomorrow. They probably have some conversation around that. I guess at the end of the day, I'm not going to ask for input today, but before my next Sound City Association meeting, I'd be interested to see how we as a city feel about that, right? Because I think at the end of the day, we need to make sure there's some input or that the value that the city is going to get out of that, right? So I mean, this, one tax after another after another, right? So sometimes, King County, they're the big brothers, and they kind of dictate how things go. And you know, if we can't get out in front of it, then we need to make sure if they're going to make it happen to us, then we want to make sure try to get something out of that. So I'll be sending an email out in the next week or so, just trying to get you guys' input. And Tony, you're on RTC, so you'll probably get some conversation on that tomorrow as well. And the last thing, there is a dinner tomorrow, Sound City Association, at the Renton Pavilion Center in Renton, and that's at 6:00 PM. And King County Executive Dow Constantine will be there, and I will not be there. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council will be meeting next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, a week from day after tomorrow, on the 27th. So I'll have a report after that. Nothing new since the report earlier this month. King Conservation District, we will most likely not have another meeting until July. But I want everybody to be aware that they have this really fabulous plant sale that, if you remember, so you have participated. It's not what you think about when you think of your average plant sale. There's lots of education going on also, but they have a lot of plants that are native to Washington. And they will let you know all the benefits. I won't go into that. But that, you are able to preorder your plants online now. KingCD.org is the website for that. And Arts Commission, be sure that you take a look. You have until the end of February to take a look over Centennial at the latest art exhibit. It's a photography exhibit. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Mayor, that ends our reports.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we do not have any public hearing tonight, but we do have two opportunities for public comment. Our first public comment period will be general public comment. The second one will be followed up with special public comment, and it's saved specifically for Rally the Valley draft regulations. So we'll start with the general public comment. We do limit your time to three minutes. Ask that you state your name and city of residence for the record. Kim, could you call our speakers, please?
Yes, I have Roble Mousay, Abdi Hakim Hashi, and Shiriki Olo. And I have one more, John Yates.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Roble. I was here in November, and I talked to you briefly about bank de-risking and the public safety issue related to that. Since then, the issue is still persistent. It still remains an issue. What has changed is our approach. Based on feedback from local leaders, we've been advised to take this maybe locally to the state level. And so we are seeking a resolution, maybe in the state level, for this issue. And what we have in front of you, we've requested, is a draft resolution that we have been presented to City of Seattle, Taquilla, C-TAC. It's in different levels of review at this time. And so what we're asking is a resolution in support of these unbanked businesses to raise the profile of this issue as we move, we take this issue to Olympia and specifically to the Financial Institution Economic Development and Trade Committee to bring all the parties together and find a solution. So this resolution does not take a position on what the solution is. It's to say bankers, businesspeople, regulators, let's come together, find a solution to this problem. Because, you know, and there is robberies happening, and it's a public safety issue. And then secondly, so the other thing also, I've come here today with, and two members of the committee, one is Mr. Hashi, and he is actually a victim of robbery. And Mr. Hashi is also a longtime resident of Kent, so he'll come and speak and he'll talk. But I want to say something important about Mr. Hashi. Mr. Hashi is American Dream. He has a company that spans seven states. And he has an operation in Kent and in Taquilla. And he is having a hard time keeping his business alive because of the bank issue. And he contributes to the community. So we have a soccer event that helps address delinquency among East African youth. And it brings together 10 teams across the state and Canada to come and play here in Washington State. Mr. Hashi has been sponsoring that for the last 10 years. He actually has a team that's called Eftin, based on his company. And so, you know, we need small businesspeople like this who are part of the community and are contributing to the community. And so I know the City of Kent does not have jurisdiction over the banking, bankers, but this is almost like a voice of support saying, we do have businesses in our community that are unbanked. It could potentially be a public safety issue, and we want to pass this to the right authority, which is Washington State, to resolve it. We're not asking you to take a position on it. And we have a couple of other cities, and we look forward for your consideration and understand what is the process for us to get this to the right committee and for it to be reviewed and voted on.
Thank you.
You're very slow.
I can stop in a minute.
All right. Okay. All right. My name is Abdul Hakim Hashi, 14030 278th Street in Kent, Washington. I am a business owner. First of all, I have a heavy accent, so I hope that you understand my accent. One of my signs is here, I have cover of them, and they make jokes of my accent always, they make jokes. So you know that. So I'm a business owner. I have one office in Kent, one branch, but the main office is in C-TAC, Washington, and I have offices, seven states. I am licensed or registered with the Department of Treasury, but here, DFI, Department of Financial Institutions, I am bonded, licensed. I follow all the rules and regulations, but still, I cannot bank. I serve the East African community. Even the money transmitters, like Western Union and MoneyGram, they do not serve where I serve because Somalia is a chaos, as you know, there is no banking system. But we have our small units which we can transfer money. And the people we serve here in our community are those who are cab drivers in this care sector, for example, child care sector, elderly care sector. Those people send money to their families back home, and we are the one who are serving them. Because we serve where the banks cannot serve, on refugee camps, for example, in Kakuma in Kenya, there are two refugee camps, each has half a million population. There's no bank, there's no other, but we are the ones who serve there. So we are doing a good job for the community. The problem, so after the risking of the banks, we cannot bank. And because we cannot bank, there is a safety issue. I have been robbed twice, my business, with gangs. So, and now physically, we transport money from state of Washington with coffers full of money to Dubai because there is no other option. We tried, I have been in Washington DC three times, we tried everything, but still, the banks do not want to serve us. I don't know why. So what we are asking you is to bring that issue to the Olympia and to the Department of Financial Institutions because they are the regulators who regulate those banks, especially the credit unions and local banks. Because we know the national banks are a little bit difficult, but those small banks regulated by the DFI, I think they can do something. At least to keep our cash, instead of keeping the cash in our offices, we like to keep it at least in the bank. We are transparent. I have, every year, I must do audit financial statement. I must have, at least twice. I must have, uh, I, um, at least once or three times a year, in, in inspections from either by the Department or the IRS or other states which I am licensed in. So that's what we are asking you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is cold in here. And so I'm going to keep my jacket on. Um, my name is Shukri, and I am a resident of this great city, have lived here, I'm not going to age myself, but, um, for a few decades now. Um, I professionally work for King County, um, implementing the youth development strategy with Best Starts for Kids, and a doctoral student in the College of Education at Seattle University, second year. Will graduate hopefully next year, uh, which feels like forever, and a mother to two children, a seven-year-old son and a 10-year-old daughter, uh, who refuse to stop aging. If you could do a resolution on children aging, that would be great. Um, I am here, uh, as a community member, to support this resolution, and I'm going to try to paint you a snapshot of, of my life growing up. So I grew up in refugee camp, spent six years in the refugee camps of Kenya prior to being resettled in the, in the United States. Um, and my story is not unique. Um, many of us, millions of us, have been able to find, uh, stability and peace in our newfound countries. But in those six years, my widowed mother and three children were surviving on funding that we were getting $50 a month from my uncle in Ohio. Um, and there were many families who were getting and waiting at, you know, there was a, like a line of families waiting for their money from their families in the diaspora. Um, and that $50 a month was our lifeline. There are many families, as Hashi mentioned, 500,000 Somalis in Kakuma and other places, families in Bangladesh who live in Kent, uh, whose families live in Kent, or in Afghanistan or in Somalia, who rely on the funds that businesses like Mr. Hashi's are able to send abroad to their respective countries. And so what we're asking for is a draft resolution, to be able to support it, um, and to be able to, uh, have our state legislature take this up. Um, many of us have been trying to get traction on this issue of remittances for at least five years. Uh, Council, Congressman Adam Smith has been working on it. Uh, Mr. Hashi mentioned it as well. Um, and so we urge you, as your constituents, uh, as a voter in this great city, to at least take this on, uh, and to make sure that the families waiting in Bangladesh, in Mexico, in Somalia survive. And one day might even thrive because of the families that are doing their part in this great city in Kent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last speaker, John Yates. Sorry, I wrote your name down. That's all the regular public comment I have.
All right. Thank you. So, Council, there's a request before you. I would ask that you individually take a look at this, um, and determine individual support for the request that was made tonight. All right, we will move on to the special public comment, the Rally of the Val, Rally the Valley Draft Regulations. Kim, you want to, oh, we've got Haley giving us a presentation first, sorry about that.
Well, uh, you heard the presentation. I just thought I would do a quick intro for those in the room who are not aware. At the workshop, we heard about the Rally the Valley Plan. It's a subarea plan document that, uh, council will be considering at a public hearing on March 3rd, so that's the official public hearing date. Um, the adoption is scheduled, or, you know, tentatively, at council's discretion for that night as well. So we're here tonight to make sure that we have plenty of time to consider any last-minute comments, uh, that have come in sort of at the end here. We have been taking public comment throughout the whole project. Um, and just a quick recap for those who are unaware about the hundreds of pages about this, which would be totally understandable if you were not, um, part of the project. Uh, the subarea plan is regarding Kent's industrial lands and our industrial valley. And the plan document covers land use, regulation changes such as development standards and zoning, and, uh, as well as infrastructure, uh, and all sort of steered towards, uh, getting our industrial valley to be on a more fiscally sustainable path. So the idea is to, um, take a look at regulations that have been in place for decades, which, um, as trends in industrial development and business models have changed, we haven't ever taken a, a look at those industrial policies, um, based on new information. So that is the plan. Uh, it's available on the city's website, and we can also get anybody a hard copy who's interested. And, um, with that, I think that's all I need to say.
All right. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, Kim, would you call our speakers, please?
Sure. I have five people signed up to speak. Uh, Mike Newton, Craig Heater, and Philip Wood are the first three.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the Rally the Valley. I just want to make some comments. My name is Mike Newton with Kidder Matthews. My story's not as glamorous as saving lives, so, uh, or being a refugee, but, uh, real briefly, uh, it's specific to Rally the Valley and the development standards. I wanted to express a bit of a dissenting voice, a concern with some of the corridor on 212 and West Valley, uh, the potential unintended consequences it might have, uh, in regard to, uh, the types of buildings that those requirements, specifically the parking, the dimensions of the building, uh, could have on that corridor. And, uh, I know there's a lot of great initiatives that have been put into the Rally the Valley. My concern specifically to that corridor is it's driving toward manufacturing. And if the manufacturing actually was there, uh, and the demand was there, they would come in, into the buildings that are just distribution-type buildings or manufacturing-type buildings. Uh, but if you're forcing the developer to take on the extra risk of developing those buildings at an extra cost, you're going to drive up the cost to the manufacturer that potentially could go there. In addition, uh, driving up those costs, the, the manufacturer, if the demand is there, they will come regardless if you built the building specifically for a developer, uh, for a distributor or for a manufacturer. And I think those initiatives, a lot of the initiatives in the Rally the Valley, I like in the progressive nature of it, that one specific area, uh, has concern for me, uh, both in driving the cost up and, and, uh, suggesting that we build manufacturing or flex-type oriented buildings will drive the demand there. And I think actually what that code does is tells the developer they can build a 30,000-square-foot building, uh, and have as many dock doors as you want. And I think by driving that narrative and the code allowing for that, you're going to find a bunch of small distributors along that corridor, exactly opposite of what we're looking for in that area. So, uh, thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Do you have a question, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned driving up the cost twice, but could you just give me a couple of example detail when you mentioned driving the cost up?
Yeah, there's a lot of aesthetics that go up, uh, along those, building a smaller building for one, um, bu, building a 30,000-square-foot building versus a 200,000-square-foot building is about double the cost. Uh, the coverage ratios to those sites go from about 45% coverage to about 35% coverage. So your land and, land value under the roof, uh, also approximately goes up 30 to 40%. So those smaller buildings are literally almost double the cost to build.
And it's one, and we talk about the market, and we don't really know what the market's going to dictate, right? I mean, that, that works either way, right? Would you agree to that?
Did we, uh, did you suggest that we're going to drive policy and, uh, and by enforcing code, I would, I'd much rather hear you guys say we're going to get, if we want manufacturing and we want a denser population, I'd much rather hear somebody say, "We're going to give tax breaks to, to the manufacturers to induce them to come in," versus telling the developer, "We're going to build this building, and we're, we're going to tell you we want, this is the type of building we want along this corridor," and expect the, the demand to come because we forced the developer to build that building. Uh, it seems counterintuitive to me. I'd much rather hear you guys say, "Yeah, we'll give tax breaks." Uh, you go to other parts of the country that are giving tax breaks or incentives or vouchers or any along, anything along those lines that would incentivize the manufacturer to come into what is considered one of the more expensive places in the United States to, to manufacture. And, and the facility costs are important, but also the labor costs are important. There's a lot of drivers that go into manufacturing just to suggest that we're asking the developer to build those quote-unquote "manufacturing" buildings doesn't necessarily mean the manufacturer's going to come. And, uh, so those are some of the things. And it's a, it's a, it's a much bigger story than I have the three minutes to, to talk on.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig Heater. Uh, I also work for Kidder Matthews. Mike's in my office, so, um, I get to see his pretty face every day. Uh, I was going to talk about, uh, some other items about the Rally to Valley report, but after listening to the presentation again, I thought I'd key on just some specific issues that I think are, um, that are drivers to this. Uh, one of these, there was the, the emphasis on the makeshift goals, where the goal of the city is to get, uh, more people out of their cars and have alternate transportation, whether it's by bike, by carpooling, um, or by public transit. And those are all great goals, and I, I think the city probably agrees that we'll see more and more of that as transportation costs continue to go up. But if that's the case, then why are we looking at, or why is the, um, the resolution suggesting making additional parking for some of these industrial buildings that will have a less parking demand if those goals get met on the transportation side? So again, it goes back to driving, uh, additional costs for developers when the demand for parking, uh, isn't there. Um, I've been doing this 18 years. When I get a call from manufacturer or distributor looking for, for space needs, the parking question is probably about the 20th question that we discussed. The initial ones are, what's my rent? What's the clear height? How high the building is? And most importantly, how many dock doors do I get with that? Because those are the drivers of our marketplace. And, um, so, you know, we, we talk about dock doors. Um, OMAX, Hexcel, Flow Technologies, is now Shape Technologies, all occupy buildings with a dock count higher than the, the ratio that is suggested in the Rally to Valley report. So just because, um, i- if you limit dock doors, you could be limiting, limiting some manufacturers, which is, again, counterintuitive. Uh, manufacturers can often go into these high dock count facilities if they have the infrastructure, like the power is the big one. If those buildings have the power to produce those goods, whatever it may be, um, that's going to be more in demand than having a building that looks pretty and, uh, has fewer dock doors. Uh, lastly, I want to, um, talk about the survey about the employees and employers. I think it was slightly misleading, um, in the fact that everybody wants to have these amenities, right? Uh, you want to have the bike pass, you want the retail corridors, um, you want the, the kiosks that would beautify and public access, but there's a cost, uh, associated with that. And I don't think in any of those survey questions where they asked an employer if they would be willing to bear those costs, or to the employees if they would look at a lower wage or maybe a slower, um, increase in their wage, if those amenities were there. I think you'd, uh, the, the answers may change significantly. They'd rather get paid more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Philip Wood. I live in Bellevue. Uh, I'm a partner with Dermody Properties, which is a national developer of industrial properties. And I wanted to talk about specifically some of the development standards, uh, in the, the I-1 zone, and, and what they can mean. Um, I'm going to echo a lot of the things that Mr. Newton or Mr. Heater said when it comes to cost and passing through that cost to the companies. My experience is, a manufacturer can go into any distribution building. They may not use the clear height. A distributor or an e-commerce company can't really go into a manufacturing building because they need the clear height, they need generous truck courts. And a lot of our older industrial space that was constructed in Kent is functionally obsolete for today's e-commerce or distribution companies. And, and industrial distribution is changing vastly because of e-commerce. You used to have big warehouses full of soap, big warehouses full of toilet paper. Now you have big warehouses full of thousands of different items that are being picked one by one by either, you know, material handling equipment or people. And in, in most cases, they're getting packed by people. And so you have very high job counts. And I think if you looked at the newer industrial that was constructed in Kent, you'll see much higher job counts per square foot than what was reported in the report. I'm building a 60, sorry for my voice, I'm coming off a cold. I'm building a 63,000-square-foot manufacturing building in Portland right now. That building is costing $160 a square foot. If I was building a 200,000-square-foot distribution building, that building would cost $100 a square foot. So there's a big cost difference for manufacturing buildings. Biggest difference is added power. And when we're designing an industrial park, we look at, how will we accommodate manufacturer? So we figure out how we're going to get that extra power there. We, we may not put it in initially, but we'll put conduit in, we'll, we'll put a bigger electrical room in, we'll, we'll be able to accommodate it. The other thing we look at is, how do we accommodate the higher parking ratios required for manufacturers? Well, e-commerce has changed that for traditional industrial, because they require so much more parking. So we really look at, how do we convert truck courts into parking lots? And how do we accommodate that? And we really think it through, because we're trying to lease it the fastest we can. And so we're trying to appeal to the highest common denominator of potential tenants out there. And we love manufacturing tenants, they sign longer-term leases than distribution tenants. Um, we end up with, you know, nicer building, they tend to have better credit in a lot of cases. So I, I think you should ask staff to paint a picture in I-1 of the finistration and the things that they want done, price that out, show you pictures, so you know if you're really getting the bang for the buck in the corridor. I, I support a nicer architecture in that corridor, right? But only to an extent where you don't price the people you're trying to attract out of the market. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two people left to speak, Nancy Rogers and Van Hurst.
Uh, my name is Nancy Rogers. I'm a land use attorney with Karen Cross and Hempelman, and you saw me last when you adopted the moratorium back last spring. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of Segali Properties, and with me in the audience are members of, of that company. Um, as you know, Segali owns over 1.5 million square feet, uh, in the city of Kent, uh, plus the last two vacant sites in the city, uh, within the industrial zones. We are, um, very pleased to be here tonight to be at what I hope is close to the end of the moratorium. Um, we also sat through the, the work-study session earlier tonight, and I was very pleased to hear, um, Econ Northwest's presentation confirming that his industry warehousing and logistics, in fact, does generate a lot of revenue for the city of Kent. And certainly its fair share when you look at those percentages of the 22% of the land base versus the tax dollars that were coming in from the multiple tax sources. Um, I also heard and appreciated, uh, the concept of the industrial ecosystem. Uh, and we're here tonight definitely to ask you not to break that industrial ecosystem. We don't want to break the plant ecosystem either, but don't break the industrial ecosystem while, while we're trying to do something good. We recognize, and I think now you have the data in front of you to recognize, that industry is in demand. Office is not so much in demand here in, in the Kent Valley. And as Bill Ellis noted earlier tonight, um, you know, you can't just zone jobs into existence, unfortunately. Wish you could. Um, so we're here, um, asking that you keep doing what the city of Kent has excelled at for decades, which is fostering, uh, the industrial uses in, in the, in the city of Kent and the Kent Valley broadly. Um, we're here to try to make a better industrial valley together. Um, I want to especially call out and thank Councilmember Boyce, Kurt Hanson, and Bill Ellis for working with Segali Properties on a lot of the details over, uh, in particular the last couple of weeks after the massive packet of information was released and we dug through it. Um, but there's still more to do. The devil is always in the details. Uh, and we do have additional work to do to refine the package that's in front of you before it gets adopted, to make sure that it can work. In particular, I'm obviously here on behalf of Segali Properties specifically, uh, and their vacant sites, but also for the broader industry as, as a whole. So we look forward on, uh, continuing to work together, um, with city staff on some details. And I do have to that end, a collated stack. I have a little one-page letter for me, it's very basic. And then I have a memo from Segali that lists some of the issues. This is not comprehensive, but it is the big-ticket issues that we were looking at earlier today. With that...
Thank you.
So we look forward on continuing to work together with city staff on some details. And I do have, to that end, a collated stack. I have a little one-page letter from me, it's very basic, and then I have a memo from Segali that lists some of the issues. This is not comprehensive, but it is the big-ticket issues that we were looking at earlier today. With that, I'd like to turn this in. I'll bring it over to you, and that's all I have, unless you have questions.
I just want to make a comment, and I really appreciate what you have saying. I think we, as a city, the mayor, I mean, we definitely see the industrial valley of Kent as a main source for us, and we look forward to continue working with everyone, really, to make sure, you know, we figure this out. You're right, endeavors is in the detail. I think the frameworks have been set, right? So we just need to figure this out, and we will look forward to working with the business and the people to make sure we get it right. So we own this together. We want Kent to continue to be a vibrant city, and people to come here to live, to work here, so we can't do it by ourselves, but we definitely want to partner with you, and I think the mayor would feel the same way.
Yeah, and we really do appreciate all the effort that you have put into this and the willingness to have these conversations. So I agree with Councilmember Boyce, we're not done talking.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Van Hurst. I'm a resident here in the city of Kent for, seems like, an eternity. There's nobody that I know of that came to Kent and said, "I have a vision that we need to change the city of Kent." They came to the city of Kent because it was an industrial city with great neighborhoods and great schools. And now I'm seeing a whole bunch of bureaucrats, not necessarily elected, saying that we need to make changes. I sat through a 90-minute approximate presentation tonight, and I saw skewed numbers multiple times. I saw a chart with trends discussing how certain revenues and taxes came in, but nobody pointed out that Segali Properties had a moratorium thrown on them last year, and that money would greatly have affected those trends and charts. It was completely not even an artist or a footnote in it. It was, "This is the trend, here's 2019, we love it." There was also muddy numbers with employment and other issues. There was mentioned almost a quarter million people of employment, but that was referring to the entire valley structure. Then, in another small piece, they talk about 49,000 employed in the actual Kent industrial valley. Anybody can sit down and make statistics and target them to a market. And I feel that there is a whole bunch of numbers that are not out to the public tonight. We saw in a very quick blip on one screen that there's a higher vacancy rate in the office structures that the city staff is promoting, yet we show a very low vacancy rate in the industrial buildings, that all these people, these developers are coming and wanting to say, "We want to put people to work, we want to produce money for the city." I also did not see anything about what is the cost in public services, fire, police, medical, for an industrial building or warehouse building versus these people farms, basically these call centers, these telecommunications centers that was being promoted along here with these higher street parking, higher parking stalls. This is all a bunch of change that it seemed like city staff wants, you know? Maybe you folks as elected officials want it too. But when I talk with the citizens in my neighborhood of Sine Hill, and I talk with my employer down in the North Kent Valley, nobody talks about any of this stuff that the city staff is pushing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, do we have any other speakers?
I have nobody else signed up to speak.
All right. Thank you very much. So just as a follow-up, we will have the official public hearing at the next council meeting and possible action at that time, but still plenty of opportunity to continue those conversations, so thank you very much. Okay, I will, I've got one quick thing that I forgot to add under our events calendar, but it feels a little bit appropriate, being that it's going to be held in the industrial valley. On March 5th at 6 o'clock at the new Blue Origin building on 76, we'll be holding the State of the City address. It is open to the public, doors open at 6:00. Event starts at 6:30, an opportunity to hear about all of the things that are going on in the city of Kent and get a glimpse inside that beautiful tensile membrane structure that is now built on 76. So I would like to invite everyone out for that on March 5th. Okay, back to the agenda. We have nothing under other business. We do have two bids this evening, $125,000, oh, I'm skipping all the way around, apologize for that. Number nine is Consent Calendar. This is an item that compiles a list of things that the council has worked on over the last couple of weeks at the Committee of the Whole. Council President Troutner, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Consent Calendar items A to G.
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Now moving on to bids. Joining us is Tim LaPorte.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We have two bids to show you tonight. They're very different types of endeavors. The first is for a water tank up on the East Hill. This tank is our 125,000-gallon tank. It serves the 485 zone. It's got a great view from the top, but it also has some issues. And one of those issues, it needs to be repainted, which steel tanks do need to be repainted. It's behind the Montessori skill on 98th Avenue, it's about 100 feet high. And if you look right up there, that's the ladder that needs to have a kind of a cage put around it, make it safer. So we're going to do that at the same time that we do the painting, because we have to do welding and stuff like that up on the tank, and so it's always best to recoat them afterwards. You'll notice the lateral bracing here, that was done back in 2005, so the tank has been retrofitted seismically so that it can withstand the type of earthquakes that we expect in this region. So the tank itself, as I mentioned, is just north of Sine Hill Elementary, I'm sorry, East Hill Elementary right here, it's just north on 98th Avenue. This is a larger 6-million-gallon tank on the foreground that the little tank is behind, but the smaller tank is higher. Again, this shows some of the problems that we're having with it. If we don't deal with that, just like you would expect with rust, it will eventually cause further problems, including leaking. Again, the ladder currently is not for the faint of heart, that's looking down, 100 feet, so we will be putting a cage around it, which will make it a little easier. To my knowledge, none of our employees have any issues going up it, but it's a nice view when you get up there, is what I've been told. So at any rate, we do recommend awarding this. The bids came in really, we're very pleased with the bids, they're very close. As you can see, there's only like 0.3% difference between the first and the second low. HCI Industrial did the Cambridge bid for us last year, or Cambridge Tank for us last year, and so we do recommend awarding to them in the amount of $1,358,412. So we're very pleased, and we do recommend awarding.
Okay. Any questions for Tim before we have a motion? All right, seeing none, does someone have a motion?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor. I move to award the 125,000-gallon reservoir recoating and fall protection improvements project bid to HCI Industrial and Marine Coating, Inc. in the amount of $1,358,412, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the second bid, 2020 line striping.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. This is a little bit more closer to the ground, but we annually repaint all of our streets that I will show you in just a second, all of our minor collectors, collector arterials and arterials. So there's the paint striper in the background. We typically will paint the lanes, of course, the yellow median that you see in the middle. And then we install a certain number of additional buttons. The buttons last a little bit longer. Fortunately, we haven't had to plow off too many of this year with snow, but nonetheless, we repaint everything in terms of the striping. I'm not talking about the thermoplastic, which would be like crosswalks, stop bars. That we will do with a separate bid, which will be coming to you in about a month and a half. Both of these items need to be done in the dry weather. So again, we do the entire city with the paintline striping. Very important to have that done so that we can see it very clearly in the winter months, particularly December through now, basically. So there you can see them at work. These are the streets that we do. We do not do residential streets. You can see there's quite a bit in the core area that we do. And again, this is an annual thing, but streets have been chosen with sound traffic engineering principles, and again, anyway, this is consistent with past practice. So we do like the low bidder, we've had good luck with them. Actually, all three of the bidders have done a good job, but again, the bids came in very close. Oops. And the lowest bidder is one of our new employees, but he didn't qualify. So actually, that's, Gerson Ron has been doing a very good job for us. He came in slightly higher with his, or slightly lower with his estimate, but we do recommend awarding to Stripe Right, who have done great work for us. I'm going to pass.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I award a 2020, make a motion to award a 2020 paintline, extracted and raised pavement markings based on project bid to Stripe Right, INC., in the amount of $285,060, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions subject to the city attorney and public work director.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. All right, we do not have an executive session this evening, so with that, we are adjourned.
In 2020, we're going to roll up our sleeves and continue delivering results that improve your quality of life. The best is yet to come. We are Kent.
I am Betty Thompson, and I have been in the city of Kent since 1971, and in this house since 1972. It's my home, and it has been, and I just don't want to, I want to stay here until I don't live here, live anymore.
Barbara Dolly, I've lived in Kent about 60 years, but here 43.
I'm Marion Worth.
And my name is John, and I have lived here for about 39 years.
And I've lived here 50 years.
This is our home until, until we expire.
My name is Lee. I've been here for 22, 23 years. And I had a bathroom floor that was rotten out, and one guy came and he looked at it, and he promised me he'd be back the following week to fix it. Well, he never showed up.
When you call somebody else to come over here, you're going to, three, four days, It's like you never get it done. And when you've got a faucet running, you can't leave that going forever.
Being disabled, you're on more or less of a fixed income. When the cost of living goes up and up and up, you get in the bind.
They don't live next door.
No.
And they're more than willing to help, but sometimes the help may be out of state.
My brother-in-law replaced...